Call this meeting in order, please. Please stand for the pledge. Supervisor Cottick.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and created from just one.
Supervisor Greco. Supervisor Stark.
Here.
Supervisor Barone.
Here.
Supervisor Wheeler.
Here.
Supervisor Tiarra.
Here.
Supervisor DeMaza.
Here.
Supervisor Allen.
Here.
Supervisor Solomon. Supervisor Strebe.
Here.
Supervisor Collington.
Here.
Supervisor Quatton Bush.
Here.
Supervisor Radzakowski.
Here.
Supervisor Sweet.
Present.
Supervisor Thayer.
Here.
Supervisor Stagliano.
Here.
As you all know, the purpose of this meeting is for amending the tentative budget. Supervisor Quatton Bush?
I'd like to call for Republican caucus. I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. First up is a resolution amending 2013 tentative budget officer. It's resolution number 215, sponsored by Supervisor Tiarra. Do we have a second? Very none.
Next up is resolution number 216. Office for the Aging. Supervisor Tiarra is the sponsor. Do we have a second? Ron Barone.
Chair, can we also get the correct figure? From last year's voting?
What we actually paid? What did we actually pay last year?
One ninety.
We've budgeted one ninety eight, but then we had this eight now.
Two oh six.
Two oh six.
So can we amend this to two oh six?
Are you motioning for a second? We have a second amended amendment. Bill Strebe?
This has to also be amended as to where to get the money from.
That is correct.
Right. Well, right now we're fund balance.
Fund balance. Are you making that part of your amendment? You're good with that, Bill?
Yes.
On the amendment. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the resolution as amended. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? I'm sorry.
I'm just questioning why you needed the source of the revenue for it.
What's not in the budget account?
Doesn't matter. At the end of the day, you're going to have to come up with you're going to be amending fund balance.
But why not follow as we go along?
Fifty-five times.
Trying to make it easier for our
The resolutions should always be made bold. You've got to have a credit to your debit.
We need to do another vote?
We're doing a budget amendment.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Resolution is passed. Next up is resolution number 217, County Attorney. We have a sponsor. Do we have a second? Very none. Resolution number 218, Public Health. Sponsor Supervisor Tiarra. Do we have a second? Supervisor Stark. Discussion.
Yeah, Chair, just came in.
I want to know what the impact is. Is she here?
She's not here.
I don't see her. Is anybody from public health? I'm just, what's the impact of twenty-nine thousand? It's out of education for handicapped children. Are we allowed to play with that line?
She recommended it.
Is this her innovation?
Go ahead, Sean.
What the, I believe what the supervisor chair is telling, he's raising the revenue on this.
Yeah. Right.
But there is an offsetting expenditure. He raises the expenditure adjustment to fifty thousand. If you're going to raise revenue to twenty-nine thousand, this program is funded at fifty-nine and a half percent.
So we have to put up the other forty?
You have to add fifty thousand to the expenditure.
So we need forty and a half percent more.
You have to add fifty thousand.
We're short forty. Point five percent.
To make this
Hold.
Hold.
What line is it, Sean?
It would be eight sixteen forty four six zero zero four four three two with tuition. You have to increase that by fifty if you want to make this work.
Governor? Moment.
Chair. Public health, when we submitted the budget for all the department heads, public health submitted a response. And in there, they made four recommendations. This one was one of them. There are, there are, there are three more recommendations. So they should have been taken in, in, in total. All right? Because I think that your if I can tell you what she did.
Does it even help, the comic?
Yeah, hers are relevant. They're, they're, they're neutral. Her revenues and expenditures are neutral.
The other ones are going to take care of this forty and a half percent.
Correct.
Can we do, can we like put them together? Is that in here?
It's in Dominica.
No, they're not in anybody else's. They're in mine.
They're in Dominica.
Well, can we just hold this off? Put it when we get the other three so that we know that where they are?
That's fine with me.
Just put it to the side.
Are we going to lose track of these things?
Well, no. We can always go back and amend. That's okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Further discussion?
What is it you're going to do? You're going to leave that resolution in?
You're going to pass it?
Okay, that's correct.
With an amendment?
That's what I was just going to ask, if you wanted to amend it.
Absolutely.
To do the offset.
Fifty thousand.
Is fifty thousand indeed the number you need, Sean?
Do you want me to tell you what she did?
Yeah, I'd like to hear.
Okay. She increased thirty-two seventy-seven, which is that, by twenty-nine seven fifty. She reduced thirty-four oh one point zero one by seven thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. She increased forty-four fifty-one, which was EI federal, by forty-three two sixty-nine, which was a seven thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollar increase to offset that.
Can you do those into this?
Greg's got them, and actually it is.
Yeah, if I can, that's what I just wanted to say.
So that's seventy-eight thousand.
And a later resolution?
In a later resolution.
Right. Do we need to, do we need to amend this right now to put in the fifty?
No.
It'll all offset.
If you let it go, Greg's resolution will take care of it.
Okay?
Okay.
You confused yet?
I don't believe there was an amendment on the floor yet.
Sean?
There's no amendment on this.
No, just as it is.
As it is. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? It is passed. Resolution number 219, sponsored by Supervisor Tiarra. We need a second. Resolution number 220, sponsored by Supervisor Tiarra. We need a second. Very none. Resolution number 221, sponsored by Supervisor Tiarra. We need a second. Very none. Resolution number 222, Cornell Cooperative Extension. We have a sponsor Supervisor Allen. We need a second. Supervisor DeMaza. Discussion. Supervisor Quatton Bush?
Is that last year's number?
I believe so.
Can I put some hold?
Done, Tom?
Yep.
Bill?
The fellow's here, isn't he?
Yes.
Does that number put the dairy crop team back in?
That would include the dairy. That has to be.
Good. Thank you, Chair.
Do you want to pull it from fund balance? Or do you want to do it at the end?
We'll do it at the end. Where it's coming from, so it doesn't matter.
It's on one place, you can come and still stay under it.
Yeah, if we're short it, we've got to take it.
You can do it now.
I know if you wanted to amend it now.
I'll amend it. You want to amend it, I'll amend it.
Motion to amend from Supervisor Barone to deduct this from fund balance, seconded by Supervisor DeMaza. On the amendment. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? On the resolution as amended. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? It is passed. Next up is resolution 223, Soil and Water Conservation. We have a sponsor Supervisor Allen. Need a second Supervisor Radzakowski.
There's a decrease on this.
Supervisor Strebe?
Make an amendment that that also comes from fund balance?
I'll second.
The thirty-eight thousand?
Yes.
Seconded by Supervisor DeMaza. Discussion on the amendment. Supervisor Quatton Bush?
Ninety-eight, what was? We were at a hundred, and then back here, came down a little bit. Ninety-eight over.
That's what you're going to get.
Discussion on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? On the resolution as amended. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? It is adopted. Resolution number 224, DPW, sponsored by Supervisor Allen. We need a second.
I'll second.
Supervisor DeMaza.
None of these are in
Discussion.
None of these are in any proposed budget.
These are new, all, these are all new, right?
These, these are increases.
Decreases. These are all increases.
But they're new, right, Herb?
Yeah, these weren't decreases in the town, if I don't believe.
These, well, some of these numbers were in my department requested budget, but the sixteen thousand dollar increase in court maintenance operations revenue, from the time I submitted my budget, the courts had some tent work that they wanted to add for next year to be completed. So I increased the revenue by sixteen thousand to do those repairs.
Were the other ones in? The budget? When it was handed to Sean, were those in the budget? The other ones are, these all new?
No, they were in my initial request.
They were in my initial
I submitted it to the budget officer. He, and actually, these don't bring it back to my request, but I used some additional money in these lines. The equipment repair, I mean, I'm not going to have enough this year. I'm still looking at ten thousand. This ten thousand dollar increase will still be in a ten thousand dollar decrease from last year. And the last three lines are needed in order to continue with the demolition.
Yeah.
We need this total out of fund balance.
I'll second that.
You make a motion?
Yeah.
Seconded by Tom DeMaza. Discussion on the amendment. How much demolition did you do?
Currently, as of now, this year, we have not, we have not done any. We have some, I know I've been in conversation with the city engineer. They have five or six homes that they're looking at that we're hoping to get at least started before the end of this year, hopefully completed. And then I know they'll have some that roll in next year.
Are they paying for them?
They pay for all the, I call it out-of-pocket expenses, equipment fees, supplies, kind of tight neck suits, department fee.
All right, thanks.
Discussion on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stagliano and Strebe? Stained? Wheeler? Amendment passed. Amendment passed. The resolution as amended. Discussion. Supervisor Stagliano.
We just use another sixty-five thousand dollars of fund balance. We keep, we keep going up. We'll, if you want to bring everything back to where we were and spend the fund balance down, then fine. We'll kick the can down the road and, and we'll be broke for sure next year. You know, at some point, you got to hold the line. You got to say no. It's difficult. Nobody wants to do it. You know, we, we did a dog and pony show, and we tried to explain to everyone what our financial position is in. You know, the thing is, if we keep sticking things back in, at the end of the day, you've got one place to get it from. And, and that's, that's a, from the fund balance. You know, I came into this meeting tonight. I could do nothing. And St. John's, those taxes will go up thirteen percent, or I can work and, and try to reduce the amount of appropriated fund balance we use, and still end up with a thirteen percent tax increase. The only thing at the end of the night, the county would be a little healthier going in for the next year than it is finishing this year. So keep doing it. We're, we're we're, we're on that path. So I can tell you.
Further discussion? Supervisor Stark?
I just want to know if these expenditures that we're raising, if we don't do it, will that affect any jobs? Are they going to be laid off because of these? I understand on the next resolution, these actual resolutions won't cost any jobs.
Paul?
On this particular resolution.
I think he said something.
He said no.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Seen him last week. Okay, thank you.
Paul's that? Supervisor Wheeler?
My question is, if this, if this isn't appropriated, what would the results be? Did you not have enough to complete the demolition? What would the results be?
Yeah, I would not be able to do any demolition because part of that money is used for our annual licensing. That has to be a count. So demolition would be out. Of the, of the equipment rental, these repair lines, sixty-five thousand of all is revenue to DM fund for equipment rental. So that would, that would only leave approximately twenty thousand dollars to repair all the equipment and all the buildings. And it's just this. I don't feel that's going to be a bound.
Thank you, Paul.
Supervisor Stagliano.
We shouldn't be in the demolition business. That's not the business we're in. The business we're in is, 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 is out there. It's not into the demolition business. If the community wants to do demolition, then they should do it out of their budget. And they should pay us for it. We can't be out there doing it. Does this have a value? Yeah, down the road, it has a value of two jobs when I look at it. Because it, it looks like it's seventy-six, seventy-eight thousand dollars. And so it does have a value. The value's not there today. The value is down the road. So.
Further discussion?
We created demolition. We, we, this board of supervisors created demolition. We sent people for training. We bought all kinds of equipment. We've got everything. And now we're not going to be in the demolition business? Well, we're there. I, I, I'm sorry, but we're there. You can't need the guy shorthanded in the middle of a screen.
You started, you started demolition when you had a fund balance of fifteen million dollars.
I understand that. Well, we don't have fifteen million.
No, you don't have. So you know what you got to do? You have to, you got to stop, Ron.
But, but I understand, but we still have outstanding things out there that we have to do. We've got machinery that we paid, what, a hundred, almost three hundred thousand, as long as they don't beat each other over the head with it. We've got machinery out there that costs us over a half a million dollars. Then sell the damn machinery. At least get some money back. We've got to stay in the demolition business. I'm sorry. Thanks, Chair. I'm sorry.
Supervisor DeMaza.
I'm not so pessimistic to think that things won't change in the future. I know certain supervisors keep saying that, you know, we're going to get worse and worse, but I don't think the climate's going to provide for that. There's always a cyclical change here over a period of years. And, you know, we've seen the same thing back in the eighties and probably in the nineties and again in two thousands. And, you know, I, I still say, and I have the tax rates from 2012 here in my hand right down to 2004. Actually, it went further than that, but this was the only thing that printed. So I compared 2006. I picked the year 2006 and I compared it with to 2012. And 2006, and, and these are the tax rates per thousand in each one of these municipalities. Okay, in, in the city of Amsterdam, the tax rate in 2006 was nineteen dollars and ninety cents. 2012, it was nineteen dollars and twenty-one cents. It had dropped over a period of seven years. In the town of Amsterdam, the taxes were a hundred and thirty-two thousand, a hundred and thirty-two dollars per thousand, dropped down to a hundred and twenty-six dollars per thousand. A decrease of six dollars per thousand. Candy Harry, it went up slightly, about sixty cents, fifty, fifty-eight cents. Charleston, they went through a reval. Florida, it actually dropped forty cents over a period of seven years. Glenn, it dropped down, I think, close to a dollar twelve or so. Minden went through a reval, so it dropped down. Mohawk, the same thing, from a hundred percent, or went to a hundred percent, so it dropped drastically. Palentine, twenty dollars and eighty-five cents to 2042. Went up about forty cents a thousand over seven years. And Ru, they went through a hundred percent reval. St. Johnsville, thirty-seven dollars and seventeen cents, down to thirty-three dollars and twenty-six cents in the year 2012, which is about a twelve percent decrease. So if they go up thirteen percent this year, they'll be one percent higher than they were in 2006. I think this board has done a re, and I keep hearing people say that the taxes are too high. They're too high. Okay? Yeah. But not in this county because we've done a remarkable job in keeping the taxes low. A remarkable job. What can you say that you purchased on a market today in 2012 that's actually cheaper than it was in 2006? Not a thing. Gas has gone up enormously from 2006. Everything. There wasn't, there's not a thing out there that you can say hasn't gone up since 2006. But our taxes are actually lower than they were in 2006. I would say that's a remarkable job on behalf of this board and the ones who have sat here for the past seven years and gone through the same steps of going through the budget tonight. So I congratulate those people who have sat here for seven years for keeping the budget the way it is and keeping our taxes low in each one of these municipalities. Thank you, Chair.
Supervisor Stagliano.
Well, we look at statistics and we look at it differently. I look at 2010, and, and we actually, our levy was twenty-three million nine hundred and ten thousand. You all have this in front of you. That's what we gave out that day when we did it. If we look at this budget the way it is now, we're going to, we're going to raise twenty-eight million one hundred and ninety-seven thousand. When I do the math, it looks like four million dollars more that were taken out of the public. I commend the town of Amsterdam for the amount of, of commercial traffic they have. But I also, we, we also gave out, and you have it in front of you, the taxable value of the county. In 2010, it was 2.2 billion. In 2013, it's 2.1. We actually have taxable value going down in Montgomery County. So, you know, I've been here since 98, except for one year. But, but the thing is, we're looking at two different sets of numbers. And, and my numbers don't look so hot. When I look at the fund balance, going down. And you weren't here when Ron was here, when it was down to a hundred and, and sixteen or a hundred and sixty thousand. And yeah, in the eighties, it was low. And then they had two thirty-five percent tax increases. So if that's what you want to give to your constituency, then be my guest. What I want to give them is some consistency. That it's even. We don't have spikes. People expect taxes to go up one percent, two percent. They don't expect it to go down, but we've been going, we went up four million dollars in, 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 in three, four years. So you can look at tax rates. I'm only looking at the amount of money we take out of the citizens of Montgomery County. So we'll continue. Thank you, Chair.
Supervisor Stark?
So I, I agree that, you know, we can't just, you know, devastate our county just for the sake of devastating the county. For the last decade, you know, I guess I, again, I don't want to get in any confrontations of the thing because this is a time we need to put our heads together and come to some agreement. But, you know, I can only see what's going on. Regardless of taxes went down, as a percentage of home values of the nation, we're among the top three highest in the state. So, you know, while taxes might have gone down and we pretended to hold the line, home values have gone down. That I know. I just had my house appraised at four hundred dollars more now than it was in 2004. I put thousands of dollars into it. So there's no appreciation there. And, and we can look at our unemployment rate. That's been constantly nine, nine and a half percent for the last decade. So presenting a budget in here that cuts enough, that lays off thirty people, is probably not a good, if it did, tentative budget. And that doesn't, you know, that doesn't bode well because that just puts more people in a position that we can't find jobs for. So I'm not pessimistic. I am optimistic that it will get better, that people will spend some more money and our revenues will come up. But at the same time, it's, it's really cautionary. And I look and I beat this up. You know, how much is two percent? How much is three percent? How much is five percent? And I look and say, well, the city of Amsterdam, that's not a lot of money that costs to be here. But then I have to go back and say, I'm working. What happens, you know, when I retire in a very short period of time? So how does that affect? I would suggest on this is that maybe we ask our department head right now if there's a compromise for court maintenance operations. I mean, obviously, we can't I mean, obviously, we can't go without repairing our vehicles and our buildings. If there's something in there that we compromise, you know, are we going to stay in the demolition? Well, we have to, we're going to have to compromise one way or the other on this. But I'm not going to sit here and just keep putting things back in the budget that we may or may not be needing to keep running up the fund balance. My suggestion early on was that we used about $1 million, 1.2 million. I thought it was going to be lynched in a couple of meetings, because some of the supervisors didn't want to use any fund balance. They don't want to raise taxes, they don't want to cut people. So we can't have it all. So either we're going to do some balance, we're going to cut some expenses, and we're going to save our employees, and go on. Maybe we do have to kick the can down the road a little bit. And, and, no, I can't say we need the hope, but we have to take some type of action. We're not going to argue for two months and not agree on a budget and let the tentative budget be adopted. That is just, you know, that would be irresponsible for us, so... So the first thing I would ask on this, on this, is there a compromise that we, you know, that the department head is very comfortable with, that we can maintain our buildings? And what can we let go? Because I can't just keep here, I can't just sit here all night and just keep raising, just robbing it from the fund balance. All right? That's it, thank you.
Further discussion? Supervisor Cracker Bush.
In regards to the demolition, we haven't done any demolition this year. Or we have. Did I hear you say that we might do some by the end of the year?
Yes, the city has requested five to six.
Forget about who requested it for a minute, but we haven't done it all year long. We just haven't, we just haven't done it. So I don't want to see the program grow away, because it's something that we started. But maybe we have enough money in that line to pay for the licensing, keep the program with the ability to go, so that maybe if a municipality could kick in the extra to get the job done of what might be besides the disposal, if there's more, then we can go ahead and do it for them for next year. You know, maybe that's the option we got to have to, to keep it, to keep the program alive. But yeah, maybe if they want, go plane, or Minden needs one down, they just got to foot the bill next year. And when we get a little more solvent, but at least put enough in to take care of the licensing or whatever, so it doesn't go down the... We didn't do anything this year, folks, I mean, we just didn't.
Yeah, but we, Chair, didn't we allocate money for this year?
No.
Last year? Did you allocate money for licensing and that?
It was budget, it was budget.
So we're covered, this is for next year.
Well, I mean, we didn't do anything this year.
No, I understand.
So we paid for the licensing to keep it afloat, which we did. And I'm just saying, do the same thing we did this year.
Yeah.
And if a municipality like Minden decides, hey, we'd like to have one torn down, could you help us? Yeah, we'll give you the manpower, because we work good together. Any other expense associated with it this year, you'll have to encumber yourself. And maybe next year, we can help out a little bit more. I mean, that's, I don't know how much of that is here, I don't know. I don't know what the license, I think you're going back to Supervisor Stark's end of the compromise, maybe, at least in that one.
Yeah, and just one more thing to keep in mind, that under this line, I do have some work scheduled in the County Annex Building to move asbestos. And there's some work that's scheduled in the Public Works Building that has to be moved. But we're actually under citation, I would say. Got to defund it out of the, out of the...
The more we talk, I think the more it's going to cost.
Further discussion? All in favor of the resolution as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? Sweet, Chiara, Stagliano, Strebe. Sweet, Chiara, Stagliano, Strebe. Stark.
Okay, the resolution was passed.
Couldn't pass.
Didn't, did you, did you vote?
No, I couldn't, you didn't catch it.
I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry.
Butchings.
The Quacking Bushes, I know.
Now it's down.
Couldn't have.
Yeah, they didn't say your name. It's still passed.
Resolution passed.
975.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, resolution number 225, data processing, sponsored by Supervisor Allen. Need a second. I'll second it. I'm sorry, can I amend that? Well, you need a second, I seconded it, now you said amend it.
Okay. Want to start, Dan Watson needs to strike everything except overtime pay and computer equipment.
Number 225, okay, I got the correct one.
That's all that's on there.
That's all that's on there.
They've been corrected.
They weren't corrected.
Mine wasn't.
Mine isn't either way, mine isn't either way. Mine's still in the hopes, mine's here.
You got to get a computer, man.
Christ, yeah. You want to fill me out, I can't even get the right information?
Your amendment is to strike everything except for line A14-4-1680-00.1110. So everybody got that?
Yes.
In other words, the last two lines only from the original resolution.
So I need a second on that amendment, Supervisor Wheeler. Discussion on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The resolution as amended, discussion. All in, I'm sorry, Supervisor Stark.
So, this is the, would this cut out the whole printing department?
No.
No.
What happened was that the department had presented a resolution that put the monies back in as compared to the finance committee recommendation and not the tentative budget. The tentative budget, this was all put back in. So the changes that you see before you are changes that were not made in the tentative budget.
I understand, I, thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Resolution is passed. Next up is resolution number 226, DPW, sponsored by Supervisor Allen. We need a second. Supervisor Quacking Bush. Discussion.
Yeah, the only thing, first of all, on the striking. How much world striking do we expect to do this year? What, what, first of all, what do we do?
Depends on how much money you give.
No, what I'm saying is, it gone up anything per, per foot?
I mean, I don't know what next year's numbers are going to be, if you go to bid in the spring. But my guess is that they're going to make raises.
And the other $100,000 for the construction and maintenance supplies?
That's just, that's to put it back to 2012 level, which is approximately $700,000 below 2010. We've invested a lot of money in our infrastructure over the years, and that is, this, this would be the money I use to do surface tree, bridge repairs, things like that. And it's getting to the point that by the time, this is also the line I pay the mowing contracts out of, so by the time I, you know, take, you take $150,000 out of the pot, it's cutting into the maintenance of the infrastructure.
I don't, I'm not done yet. On the resolution we had passed for $700,000 for FEMA was supposed to reimburse us. Have we ever got reimbursed for that? For the cleanup, debris cleanup on these creeks and streams and all this other stuff?
I, I, I know, all I know are the PWs have been coming in. I don't know what revenues we've actually received to date, but I know that, I know that project was approved to be funded at over $650,000 or something like that.
I just wondered where we were. All right, thanks.
Supervisor Chris Kowski.
Sean, I got a question for you. On that line, I am the construction and maintenance supplies for 2012. What is the balance on that line now?
Year-to-date.
Year-to-date.
What's your balance right now? What do you have in that line?
What do you have in that line?
Paul just said there's about $65,000 left.
$65,000.
And I know I've got some outstanding invoices to pay, but it's going to be...
This goes to the towns for their snow plowing, or no?
No, this is for maintenance.
Just meant strictly the road, road and grass mowing?
Yeah, the mowing does get paid out of it, but everything else would be like the stolen oiling, the patching, grader patching, drainage, you know, any expenses, you know, by pipe or maintenance drainage, shoulder materials, we have washouts, bridge repairs.
And Paul, you started out with $500,000 this year on that line now?
No, six, in 2012, it was 600, it was 600.
Right, thank you, thank you, Chair.
We have a motion to amend, take this from fund balance. Tom DeMazza, you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second the fund.
Discussion on the amendment? I'm sorry? Sean, you had your hand?
Well, this, it needs an amendment, because you have to increase the transfer to accounts at all. We might have to move and have to increase A-06-4-9901, which is transferred to County Road Fund.
Is that D-Fund or Road?
County Road Fund.
Road.
$105,000. And also...